Welcome to the April 30th, 2024 meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on event viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chair saying none. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 38, subsection 20 until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceeding as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to the meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel TV, which is now Xfinity Channel 8 and 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post the record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. We have a kind of a joint meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust tonight, so I'm going to do a start with a roll call of the Select Board. Select Board Member Davis, I believe, is online screen? Not yet. Okay. Select Board Member Castro.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Present.
Select Board Member Shell.
Present.
And Select Board Member Metter is present. I'm going to turn it over to the Affordable Housing Trust Chair to do a roll call for the trust board.
So, yeah, I want to do a roll call. Trustee Shell is present, trustee McClellan.
Present.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
And trustee Schneeburger.
Present.
And trustee Avery.
Here.
We have a call.
Wonderful, thank you very much. All right, first item on our agenda is an executive session. Would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to go into an executive session according to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Number 6 and Number 7, to consider the exchange, lease, and/or value of real property located at Zero Meeting House Road, South Chatham, and Zero 11533 Main Street, West Chatham, in relation to the disposition of said properties for the creation of affordable/attainable housing, and to review the contents of proposals submitted therefore in compliance with the confidentiality requirement of general law, Chapter 30B, Section 6D. And the chairs declare that any open meeting, that an open meeting, excuse me, may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body with a return to open session.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you very much. I'll do a roll call of the Select Board. Select Board Member Davis, are you online yet? Not yet. All right. Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. I will do, turn it over to the chair, the trust, for their roll call.
And for the Affordable Housing Trust, I'll accept the motion to go into executive session.
I move that we go into executive session according to Massachusetts General Law, 30A, Section 21, Number 6, Number 7, to consider the exchange, lease, or value of real property located at Zero Meeting House Road in South Chatham and Zero 1533 Main Street, West Chatham, in relation to the disposition of said properties for the creation of affordable/attainable housing, and to review the contents of proposals submitted therefore in compliance with the confidentiality agreement of general law, Chapter 30B, Section 6D, with no return to open session.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Shell says yes. Trustee McClellan?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Schneeburger?
Yes.
And trustee Avery?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And we will now go into executive session. We should be back in about an hour.
Welcome back, everyone. It is five fifty-seven. We have finished our first executive session of the evening. And and we are moving on to our regular agenda. So approval of minutes for April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
Sarah Second?
Second.
Missions, corrections? Nope. Okay, all those in favor? Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
All right. Public announcements and agenda item requests. Is there anyone in the live audience with a public announcements or agenda item requests? No? Is there anyone in the audience with a public announcement or agenda item request? No hands? I don't. No, okay. All right. We have kind of a special item this evening. Appointment of special substitute town council for the annual town meeting. As our current, our town council, Pat Costello, is not available for this May's annual town meeting. I will turn it over to our town manager for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just trying to see if Mina had logged in yet. I know he has a town meeting tonight at seven P. M. I'll keep my eye out for him anyway, but nonetheless, as you had mentioned, town council Costello has two remaining municipal clients, and one of them is the town of Foxborough. And he felt because the town meeting is the same night, and it just happened to be on the same night for this scheduled town meeting, that he has an obligation to assist Foxborough. So he and I discussed about what we thought that we might need for town meeting as it relates to legal opinion or legal assistance. And what we did come back at is we thought that if there was a question, there might be something related to the chapter one hundred by law. I talked to the town moderator. He really hasn't heard anything that he would expect, but you know, anything's possible at town meeting. And so in looking at the special counsel for the airport commission attorney, and I know I'm going to spell his, say his name wrong. McCarice has other towns where he's town council in addition to special counsel for the airport commission. And he already has a relationship with the town. And so my suggestion was to appoint him as substitute special counsel. And that town council, Pat Costello, would work with him to make sure that his appearance, that he's completely up to date on everything, and is able to provide an opinion if there is something needed. So prep work before town meeting. And I feel very comfortable with Attorney Mina as well.
All right. Questions for the board? Mike?
Oh, no. No, I I don't have a que. I have, I have had some. My comment is I have had limited engagement with. I refer to him as Mina, but it's Macarios, I think. I I've been impressed. So I I would, I'm strongly supportive.
Dean?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just looking at his background here, I mean, he's count, he's not just an airport or aviation attorney. His background is in in municipal law. He's, he's counseled to two very significant communities in the Commonwealth, Concord and Lexington. So he's got the background for it. And because we do have a couple of articles on the warrant that this board has placed and recommended related to the airport, I think that background would be particularly helpful as well. And so it'd be great when he comes on, we can meet him. I think we did meet him once.
Once.
And we did interview the firm. We appointed that firm as as counsel for the airport commission. So I am, I'm in the same place that Mr. Mr. Shell is.
And with all that being said, as am I, it looks like he, he looks like to be a very good fit, even though he went to Harvard Law School and Harvard undergrad. But I don't think, he didn't do very well there either. I wish he'd go back and, you know, get summa cum laude instead of just magna. Anyway, I'm very much in favor.
He's gonna love you when you meet him. No, I'm comfortable. I mean, I I know we've kind of narrowed down the topics at the annual town meeting that we are most concerned about with potential legal opinions. So I think under the circumstances, I think this is a qualified individual. So I I I have no objection. So I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I I I move that we appoint Attorney Mina Macarios as substitute town council for the two thousand twenty-four annual town meeting.
Second. Second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Matters? Says aye. Select Board Member Dykens?
Says aye as well.
Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. So we have three public hearings tonight. First is utility hearing install one to three inch conduit forty-five feet plus or minus from proposed handhold. Five twenty-two slash H A under Phoebe Lane to customer handheld, handheld five twenty-two slash H B. This is a N Star Electric Company. So I'll ask the clerk to read the public notice, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing at five thirty P. M. On Tuesday, April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, to consider a petition from N Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy, to install one to three inch conduit forty-five feet plus or minus from proposed land, from proposed handheld. Five twenty-two slash H A under Phoebe Lane to customer handheld five twenty-two slash H B. The public is welcome to attend the meeting in person or participate via a link in the meeting's posted agenda. All interested parties are certainly encouraged to participate. Sign the select board.
Thank you very much. Who is, is there anyone online representing the utilities or? We got.
No.
No, I see a G for guest, but I don't think that's a regular person.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I guess we could ask the D P W director if he has any concerns about this, since the applicant doesn't appear to be here. It looks in, to be in order to me.
It looks standard protocol, but.
Yeah, good evening. Rob Failey, D P W director. I have no concerns with this application from N Star Electric.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience tonight with a question or comment? Is there anyone online with a question or comment? This is a public hearing. All right, I'll return to the board. Would anyone entertain a motion?
With approval.
Second.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Select Board Member Shell? Select Board Member Metter says aye. Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
All right. Second public hearing. I will ask the clerk to read the second public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing at five thirty P. M. On Tuesday, April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, to consider a petition from Verizon New England Inc. and N Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy, to place two new jointly owned poles ninety dash four and ninety dash ninety slash six, and one pole ninety slash fourteen P. B. On Morton Road in Chatham, Mass. The public is welcome to attend the meeting in person or participate via a link in the meeting's posted agenda. All interested parties are certainly encouraged to participate. Sign the select board.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone online representing the utilities? Nope. Again, Rob, do you have any concerns or comments on this?
I have, I have no concerns.
Okay, so.
Move approval?
Second.
Second. Uh, Derek, anyone from the public in house? Is there anyone online with a question or comment? I'll take that as a no. So we we return. We had a motion. We have a second?
Mr. Shell?
Second.
All right, further discussion? All those in favor? Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
And Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
And we have our third and last public hearing notice, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Chatham Select Board, acting as water and sewer commissioners, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, at five thirty P. M. In the Town Hall Annex Meeting Room two sixty-one, George Rider Road, to consider a request for increased sewer flow for a non-single-family residential property of three thousand four hundred and thirty-nine gallons per day to accommodate a new one hundred and ten-seat restaurant located at eight fifty-nine Main Street, operated by eight fifty-nine Main Street L. L. C., doing business as Chatham Greens and Rotisserie. All interested parties are encouraged to attend. Sign the select board.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Riley. Mr. Clark?
Good evening, Bill Riley, on behalf of the applicant. Dave Clark is the engineer who did the design. The, we think this is going to be a huge improvement for the town, considering the way Cumberland left it. The, we've been to the Historic Business District Commission. They've approved the exterior changes to the building. We went to the planning board. We're, thanks to Dave's help, they approved the parking lot design and the traffic flow in the drainage. And so what we need now is sewage flow so we can run the restaurant. And the sewer, the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee were kind enough to review the plan and make a positive recommendation. So we hope you will accept it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience in house tonight with a question? Is there anyone online with a question or comments? We do have one hand up. There's a G? Guest?
Ah, yes.
Elaine, please go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't put my full name. These are more procedural questions. I'm not sure. I guess Giorgio isn't there. In in the document, in the letter, it said that Cumberland Farms had never been connected to the sewer. They own the property from eighty-seven to twenty twenty-one. These are more procedural questions. I thought, you know, all the notices went out to Main Street from the wastewater treatment facility up to downtown in, beginning in two thousand thirteen, fourteen. So I guess, you know, I'm, I'm just wondering, I think there's a bigger issue, why it was Cumberland Farms never connected to the sewer. And then I thought when you sell a property, that contingent on the sale, if it hadn't been connected, it would be. And it wasn't in twenty twenty-one. So I I'm concerned more about how many more properties are there like that, that were never given orders to connect? And where was the failure in terms of ordering them to do so? I obviously, it's not going to affect this property because, you know, it is what it is. But I think that's something the commissioners should look into as to how many properties have not been connected. Because that's the whole point, is to get them online, to reduce nitrogen. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take note of that. I appreciate the input. Anyone else online with a question or comment on this public hearing? Seeing none, I'll bring it over to the board. Questions or comments from the board?
I just have a quest, a couple of questions. When are you planning to open?
As soon as possible. You know, this is, you know, unfortunately, you know, the, we submitted the application quite a while ago, but we didn't really push it and.
Is this the last approval that you need or are you?
This is the last approval.
Will they be coming in for an alcohol license at some point?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I'm just curious, this is sort of off to the side, but I didn't follow the H B D. C. proceeding. What, what, I know there was some discussion of the roof. What did they just ultimately go along with, if you recall?
I don't think there's any change on the roof.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
No, because, I mean, it's a, it's a trust roof, right?
Most likely, yeah.
Yeah, so they just, you know, maybe it needs to be reshingled, but there was no, no change to the shape of the building.
Okay, thank you. So I have some questions, but they're not necessarily in the purview of the water and sewer commissioner. Parking, seating outside, and all, but anyway. So this is, the planning board signed off on the seating arrangements and and parking, et cetera?
Well, they don't sign off on the seating arrangement.
Yeah.
But, yeah, on the parking. Yeah.
I don't know.
No, the, the planning board's purview is.
Site, the site.
The site, site plan approval. So it has to do with providing adequate parking. Dave did the parking calculation. Planning board accepted it. The, they're also concerned about traffic flow. And so we changed one access point to exit only. That's the one closest to the traffic light. And I think we made it right turn only. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, right turn only. So the access closest to Snow Lane is going to be two-way, ingress and egress. And people leaving would be able to park, turn in either direction. So we spent quite a bit of time dealing with that. And then Dave reported that Mass D O T did preliminary plan showing.
Sidewalk along the whole frontage. And so there'll be a new five, four foot, five-foot wide sidewalk, the entire frontage of this property, the Snow Lane.
Well, certainly it's going to be an improvement over what's there now. And the town, you know, it's used restaurants, so I'm certainly in favor of of approval. Thanks.
Mike, any questions?
No, thank you.
I have a follow-up question. The, the proposed floor plans which show the outdoor seating, was that the same plan that was submitted to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, there's no more questions?
Chairman, I move to support the request of eight fifty-nine Main Street L. L. C., Chatham Greens and Rotisserie, eight fifty-nine Main Street, for an increase in sewer flow of four thou, three thousand four hundred and thirty-nine gallons per day.
Do I hear a second? Further, okay, further discussion? All those in favor? Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
And Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
All right.
We, we thought you might want to round up fifty instead of forty-nine, but we'll live with the forty-nine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, public comments on our business agenda. Our business agenda consists of two items tonight. Consider appointment, reappointment, interview process for two thousand twenty-four, and the town manager monthly report for the month of March, two thousand twenty-four. So is there any public comment on our business agenda tonight? Anyone online? I see no hands. All right, moving right along. Business agenda A. Consider appointment, reappointment, interview process for the year two thousand and twenty-four. So we have a fair amount of potential interviews.
Yes, so as presented, it's, we're coming up on June thirtieth, and it's time for the board to kind of go through the list of reappointments. As of today, all of the regulatory boards, board members, committee members, and commission members who are up for reappointment have been sent letters. I have been hearing back from some of them stating their interest to be reappointed. As well as the Summer Residence Advisory Committee, they got bumped up only because they're having their first meeting on May second. And because they tend to have a shorter period of time where they work, I figured get their letters out as well. out as well. The remaining advisory committees, commissions, and boards are getting their letters throughout this week to, again, let me know their interest. I believe I noted there were 26 individuals on regulatory boards, commissions, and committees, and 42 on advisory committees, commissions, and boards for the, to be considered for reappointment. That is pending any, anybody in the bank for any of these boards that might want to. You know, we do keep, when people apply, if the boards are full, we do keep their record on file should a vacancy open up, and we try to bring them before the board as well. So that number, I haven't quite established yet. I wanted to see first who was interested before going through and presenting the board with that full number. But pending the board's direction and what you wish to do in terms of reappointments, this was the process that was presented to you last year. So if you would like to do the same process, if you'd like to change it, I'm open to your recommendations and direction.
All right, thank you very much. Any input from the board? Mike?
Yeah, I'm generally fine with the, you know, same thing we did last year. I'd like to, I am inclined, and I would invite my colleagues to comment on a suggestion that we ask any incumbent members of the Economic Development Committee to come in for an interview, notwithstanding whether they're up for reappointment or not, just because this is, we're trying to re, sort of repopulate and renovate that board. And I think it would be good if we had a conversation with everybody who's an incumbent.
With the EDC emails that go out to all members, as the board requested after that presentation from Mr. Bates, I have heard back from two of the members of the EDC to date. I have not heard back from the others. Director Donovan, Katie Donovan, who is the staff liaison, was included in those emails, so she's aware that they've all been contacted. But like I said, I've only heard from two to date of the ones that are appointed currently.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Actually, I was just going to bring the EDC up. There were two committees that kind of jumped into my mind of that we're trying to kind of revigorate, kind of restructure, we're kind of just going to work with them, EDC being one of them, and then Atletius Co was another group that we're seen to be trying to jumpstart again. So I didn't know if we should conclude them in that, in that review, just from a consistency point of view. If there's any boards that I'm missing, I would like to, you know, that we think we're restarting, I would like to consider them so we're consistent with our, with our practice, so.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I think those are the two.
Yeah, there's only two that brought, jumped to mind, but...
Nope, sounds good.
All right.
I was just going to say, I'm comfortable with the process we've had. Kathy did ask in the last bullet about preference for a fixed schedule of interviews, and whether we want them, I guess, preceding our regular board meetings. And that's all right if you have one or two, but when you get three or four, then we have to come here at four o'clock.
I think we could, you could couple in before, if we had, you know, smaller groupings.
Yeah, otherwise we should group them together.
Maybe like, I think we should pick like Thursday night or something.
I was going to suggest that, Corey. If we have, we get backed up and we have a whole bunch. Thursday's about the only night I'm available, to be honest with you. Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday sometimes, Thursday.
So maybe, we've done Thursday in the past, so I'm fine with Thursday?
Yeah, I'm fine with Thursday, too. That really works.
That's fine. Okay.
Any particular start time preference for the Thursdays?
I mean, 5:30.
Okay.
Or, I mean, you know...
Nine, 10?
Yeah. And...
Just kidding. All right, so, no, I think we're good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And town manager's report for the month of March 2024?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as I usually do, I provide the employees' years of service anniversary, and this month we're presenting May. You'll see that from Dave Ready, our fire captain, at 34 years, down to Skip Woods, James Skip Woods, as our mory manager, till one year. A lot of longevity and just a lot of great service by so many of our employees. And so this notification for anniversary dates also goes out to employees. I think Kathy has it scheduled, like, the first Monday of the month so that we can recognize the employees all month long. And then I also have provided an update on the Assistant Treasurer Collector, Leigh Anne Gay. She has started, and is doing a great job. The memo in here, I'm sorry, the content in here mirrors the memo that the Select Board and Chatham everyone, which is all of our town employees, get as an introduction. And we also recently hired DPW Parks and Grounds Labor, Donald Richardson. I mean, he's really a great add. He has a great mechanic background, too, so that was one of our goals, to try to get someone with that skill set.
Nice.
And then you're going to see a few more announcements for hires. Megan and Lisa in our HR division are doing a great job just pushing them out. So we will have our adult social worker slash condition, Diane Nash. She's going to be starting on May 5, and then others will be starting soon. And then there's a couple of promotions that we'll announce for current employees moving to a higher level position. And then working, just annual town meeting is around the corner. As you know, it's on Monday, May 13 at 6:00 PM. We do have a couple of corrected motions that we'll provide to the Select Board members who will read it, and we'll also have those notations up on the screen at town meeting. One of them, we saw the prior year bills had a carryover from an old fiscal year, not a carryover, but the notation was, I think, fiscal year '22 and '23. So we'll have that updated as the same amounts, but for FY '24 and '25. And I believe that we're still working on the article motion for the CPC appointment process. CPC Chair, Community Preservation Commission Chair, community chair had noticed that there was one line that was included in the published more that he didn't think that the board had actually accepted at that meeting. So we're still working through that, and then we'll, we presume he's right. So we'll be providing a corrected, yeah, we'll be writing a corrected motion. And then other than that, just doing a great job with our Chatham TV productions. I think the next one coming up is a behind-the-scenes with our conservation agent, so always fascinating. And then moving through the monthly report for March, a lot of really great information, more of a narrative and story for some of them, if you noticed, and just great data. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions for the board?
Just a, just a couple of comments. I really enjoyed the Park and Rec summary this time around. I'm amazed at the participation in our winter programming. The pickleball is just out of control. And I just had a follow-up question. Do we have, we have plans for new pickleball courts? Are we redoing courts here, there, and everywhere, or I just...
We do, and so six courts that, I think the final layer of the court material was just done this week, so there's been some social media push. We'll have it in the main sheet, so that's really great news. And then also the volunteer park replacement playground equipment. They're, they still have to pour it in place, and so they're getting that installed. So I think in the next couple of weeks, it's just going to be really exciting for us. We'll have pickleball courts open, we'll have the playground, a volunteer park, we'll probably do a ribbon cutting for the Eldridge Garage parking lot, so a lot of good things finally coming to fruition.
Yeah, you stole my thunder on the volunteer park playground. Looks great, Jill. Really does. Looks great. Really cool. So Park and Rec, good job. Keep it up.
Good, good. Thank you. All right. Executive session for the last item of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion?
I'll offer the motion.
Please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Select Board go into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, parentheses, number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, with no return to open session. Collective bargaining tentative agreements. A, Chatham Permanent Firefighters International Association of Firefighters, Local 2712. B, Chatham Sergeants and Police Officers, Mass Coalition of Police Officers, M, parentheses, MCOP, Local 294.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Matters says aye. Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
And Select Board, Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.